First thing I'd like to do is, you know, recognize everybody coming out and the weather to be with us tonight. Mayor Roddy wrote me a note some time back saying it's time to have a joint meeting and relative to joint recreation of the Solishon property. So, for the board, there are three items that we've agreed to put on the agenda. The first one is review the request by Philip LaPorta, PhD, to refurbish the Solishon school building for a museum and research center. And you can see in the packet a letter to Mayor Roddy from this fellow. I got a similar request to this about two years ago. Have you talked to him, Kyle, individually or?
Yes.
When he sat down, he came in?
Yeah, he came in and saw me and kind of gave me a general idea of what he was looking for and what he was proposing to do. And I said, you know, "That sounds good, but, you know, we need something in writing, something definitive for the village and town boards to discuss." So that was the genesis for this letter. And what he said was, basically, he wanted to get inside the building and see if it would suit what he's looking for. And just to summarize briefly the letter, basically, this is a gentleman who says he has a large collection of rare minerals, fossils, artifacts from this region. I guess it, I think it's larger than just the Hudson Valley region, but stretching maybe some regions of Pennsylvania and such. And he needs a place to store all this stuff and to make it kind of a museum destination for this stuff. And he thought that the Solishon building would be some potential place to look into for that. He had looked into other places. And I said, you know, "That sounds great, that sounds interesting, but we need kind of something in more detail to discuss." So that was the genesis for this.
Good, okay. When I talked to him, he said that he had, this is again about two years ago, that he had access to money, that he would get through grants or whatever to refurbish the building. And again, that was two years ago.
Well, just to add to that, when him and I spoke, he said that as well, that he had cash kind of lined up to implement on this. And my ears kind of perked up, and I said, "Okay, so you have your funding secure, but as you've read in the letter that we got, it sounds like he knows where he'll pursue it from, but it's not, you know, cash at hand at this point."
Right.
Which is a big thing for me, you know, for a number of reasons.
Well, and particularly in today's environment where the state and federal grants have all dried up, we're just not getting money out of those two sources. Okay. The, I guess everybody knows what we know now then. Well, there is one last data point for this. Back in 2005, Silman Associates, structural engineering company, this is the year after we bought the Solishon property, my predecessor, Honey Bernstein, had Silman Associates evaluating the building for other uses. And the report that we got in 2006, I think it was, said, "You better hurry up because of the amount of water going into the building. This building is not going to last much longer, and the longer it goes, the more costly it'll be to refurbish it." To the point, when I talked to the engineer, she said that it will be very, you might better take the building down and build a new one versus try to build and restore what you've got. So, that being said, that was six years ago. So I, and if you look at the building, any of us from the outside, it doesn't look all that strong and substantial. So now everybody knows what we know. I mean, any thoughts on this?
Well, like you said, with the way funding has dried up and stuff like that, the rehab of the building from the Silman report was $8 million, and that didn't include a lot of other types of, you know, that's kind of the shell type of thing. So let's put another $2 million on it or whatever. It just doesn't seem that an individual, and I could be wrong, has the wherewithal to put, let's say, $10 million into a place before you even get started.
Well, sure, and to be clear, I'm not advocating for this one way or another. It's more this information was brought to me, what he said, since I mentioned the whole grant thing too. I said, you know, "I don't think the states are giving out grants, you know, especially not grants for $10 million or whatever the cost is to refurbish a building." And he said, "Well, there's also a certain amount of interest in the private sector with these mining companies that it may seem like mining companies, you know, kind of want to show people the good things about mining and all the cool rocks and gems and minerals they discover." So he thought that that might be a source of private funding. Obviously, I can't speak to that anymore than I've just said, because that's what he told me, and that's what I'm telling everyone here.
Okay. Any other comments from the boards? I, for one, again, when I talk, George talked about the $8 million. It was $8 million, that was the shell of the building on it. No petitions inside, no heating, air conditioning, no wiring, no whatever, just the building. I think it's a, it could be a very difficult task if they had to proceed on. So, does someone want to make a motion that we authorize the mayor to get back with this fellow to say we don't have interest?
I mean, just, just a, oh, wait, we're second motion.
Yeah, the second one then. Okay, now open for discussion.
I guess my take on it, I mean, you know, to take a piece of property that's not doing much, I mean, the idea of there being a museum there that brings people to the village, gives people in the village something to do, utilize a place for schools, I think conceptually sounds like it could be a great thing. But without knowing that there's any real definitive money behind this, you know, and, you know, look, it could be there tomorrow for all I know. You know, I haven't talked to him in, you know, a few months. And if there was money that was really there, really attainable, and you want to take this building that's a liability for villagers in the town and spend their money and fix it up, I think that might be, you know, a good idea. But I'd be uncomfortable sending someone in that building without knowing that there's a hard commitment financially. So.
I'll second that. So the motion is that we authorize the mayor to respond to this fellow, we don't have interest at this time. Is that what we're saying? Any village board members have any?
Well, I'm not a question of not having interest, it's just we're not going to stop other plans that we may come up with.
Good, okay.
If he comes up with money, then great, we'll talk again, not a problem. But I think it's not to stop what you're doing, but we're also not going to stop what we might do.
Okay. I think it's past the 11th hour for this structure. It's been sitting there an awful long time, vacant, deteriorating. If there was some interest, you would think that he should have brought that forward a lot sooner, number one, and have some concrete funding in source. What it appears by in this note, and I came in a little late, is that this is what I will go out and search for. Well, it could be a 10-year search. I'm more concerned with the safety factor. I think the building is ready to collapse on it and, God forbid, some of us hurt. You just can't undo something like that. So I think, from my personal point of view, we are way past the 11th hour on this thing. I mean, if he said, "I have sources and I have $4 million committed," and so on and so forth, well, that's one thing. But to say, you know, "This is something that we could really look into," I think it is past, we have passed the point of diminishing return on this particular one. So I would agree with Doug. I think we should just tell them unless you have concrete funding in a very, very short period of time, then we need to move ahead forward so that no one gets hurt. And it's a safety issue at this particular point, and that's my take on it. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I'd like to call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any negatives? Motion carried.
Can I ask for a motion on the village board?
So moved.
In a second?
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, so I will approach Dr. LaPorte and just say, you know, "At this point, we're not interested unless some definitive funding sources can be provided. And at the same time as we move forward with whatever we decide to do in the future, he can do his own thing parallel in terms of searching for this funding. And there's nothing that says he should stop and walk away."
Right.
But, you know, we need to protect our own interests.
That's good. The second item is, the last time we met over at Village Hall, I guess probably a year and a half or so ago, we talked about the building and the need for a request or proposal for demolition of the building. And so George went out and worked with Riddick Associates, our engineering company, and got a, a RFP for the demolition of the school. It's in the packet. Your attorney for the village has looked at this and said grace over it, that it meets all the criteria that should be in it. Okay. And so with that, I talked to George. I asked George, "So George, would you research out a little bit?" This is just the RFP that would go out for quotes to figure out what it would cost to demolish the building, but bring any other information to the party relative to what we're dealing with. So like, what's the cost of administering this, et cetera, et cetera. So George, you want to?
Yep. I have the following information from Sean Hoffman, who is one of the PEs with Riddick Associates. So the, there has to be some modifications, minor modifications, to the RFP. There'll be no, they did that basically gratis, and they'll continue to do that gratis and not charge any of us any money. The second phase of it will cost approximately $1,200, and he reversed it as Phase Two. Phase Two is the bidding services, has it delineated here, if we would decide to go out to bid. Assist client in obtaining bids, coordinate publication, maintain bid distribution, receive and process deposits, participate during the pre-bid inspection, issue an addenda, coordinate the bid opening, and assist client in evaluating bids and awarding the contract. So basically, the question you have for me is, how much is it going to cost to get to the point where we can actually get some further information? And the answer is $1,200 bucks. There is an issue of asbestos. There's, and actually, this was Dave's input from it, that the RFP should go out. The people, in fact, in that, there's a recommendation that they should review the asbestos reports. There's two of them. One was done in 1998 by Dick Roberts, and the other one was done by Quest, Quality Environmental Solutions and Technologies, and that was done in November of '05. And so if we were to go out with this bidding process, the RFP would go out, and it would also be said, "Hey, you know, you have to investigate what asbestos is in there," and that would be part and parcel of the proposal that they would hand back to us. And like I said, in the sum and substance, there is more information, but in sum and substance, that's basically it.
Now, Riddick Associates, they feel confident that the information in the Quest report will be enough for potential bidders to quantify the cost of the asbestos removal?
Um, there is definitely a whole bunch of information here. I mean, all the lab reports and what's in there and so on and so forth. I was hoping that there was going to be like a review, the X amount of asbestos in there, but that's not in this report. It is in the report for Dick Roberts.
Okay.
And this one here, at least from my layman's terms, let's say, seems to have, that there's less asbestos in there than the Dick Roberts report of '08.
Yeah, the Quest report was done, again, it was sanctioned by the board, and they went out, they did borings in the walls, the ceilings, or this, or that, to determine how much was there. And as I recall, the majority of it was in the boiler room and the hall leading up to that. When we looked at the one that Mr. Roberts looked at, did, and it looked like he was looking for a job to make a lot of money, it was like $274,000, take the ceiling tiles, this, that, and everything else out, and had a different, you know, it was more of a businessman doing it versus an engineer doing it, so. But anyway, the Quest report is much more engineering-driven than business-driven. From a town perspective, I'd like to see the building come down from a safety, you know, thing. However, the, I don't know, I mean, I guess we could come up to $600 to the town to process the bidding to find out what it would cost us to do this. What would be kind of nice is, I mean, maybe to find out, maybe it's one of those mixed things, they do part, like they knock the thing down, we haul it away, or something like that. I don't know what's involved in this kind of thing. But anyway, we got the RFP as we talked about a year and a half ago, and so now, what do we want to do with it? So, from the comments from the two boards, anybody feel one way or the other whether we should move on or not? Well, you and I had a brief discussion about how to take this building down, and I think we had some, an operator that can operate equipment. I'm not sure if we can do some of this with a force account. I know there is at least one equipment leasing company in the Goshen area that handles excavators for specifically demolition purposes, and he leases them out. I don't know the cost, I don't know anything, but I believe that this particular operator will come out, this equipment operator will come out, look at the building, see what type, what we need, and if we have an equipment operator, and I didn't mean the operator, I meant the owner of this business, we might be able to take this thing down through our force account. And the way I understand it, it's not really a big deal. I thought it would be something very, very involved, and he said, "It's really not a big deal. It's not an overwhelming building. They take them down all the time." So I'm like, "Okay, so if you would like, I will just go a little further and pursue it and have someone look at it and see what the cost may be." And then I thought, I think we have one operator that can operate. Oh, we have a person who's qualified on excavators. You know, so, I mean, that's just thinking a little bit out of the box. We may be able to do that rather than get fleeced. We may be able to go forward with that. We have enough equipment, we have enough dump trucks, and we have enough, we have front-end loaders and so on and so forth, where we can maybe move this stuff around. Of course, the asbestos is something we would have to address. But if there's a remote possibility that we could take a part of it down or a big part of it ourselves, I don't know. I mean, I will be glad to take that forward and just do an investigation if the boards feel that that's something we might want to do or look at. If not, I'll just scratch that off the, off my list.
Well, it sounds like that's something that you can move forward and collecting information at the same time if we were to move forward with the RFP.
Exactly.
So, you know, they do are mutually exclusive, so I, first, I thank you for the work you've done on that so far, and speaking only for myself, it sounds like more investigation would be a good thing.
Yeah, I mean, if you all said, you know, "Stop, don't do it, go away," I will just stop immediately. But it was very interesting to me, and I talked to people that were in the heavy equipment leasing business, contracting business, and it didn't seem as involved as I thought it would be. So, it may be once I do investigation, but if you would like, I'll proceed and just bring back some numbers and. Well, you know, it was interesting, the, when we took down the tower in an emergency basis, it wasn't very costly at all. And they used an excavator and it shoved it over, pulled it around, did all the things they needed to do. Need a bigger excavator, I should think, for that hole, I've had Billy just to whack it and pull it down to the pile rubble and then, but I think the big thing that's going to, we need to determine is, from maybe our engineering perspective, is maybe Dennis Lindsay needs to look at that report from Quest and what about that asbestos in there? Because you start knocking down, mixing it in with everything else, it might have a real problem. And if it's got to come down, something has to be done with it anyway, no matter who does it, so.
Question.
Yeah?
If we go out to bid, do we have to give the contract out?
No.
So it wouldn't hurt us to go out and bid just to get a flavor, to see what this is all about, how much it costs? I mean, I think that is our, well, you're saying it's right.
Yeah, I think we should do it all at the same time.
But I think we finally need to know what this is going to cost if we really want to take it down. And I've talked to some contractors years ago, some of these people that will take it down, they could also get returned dollars because you could take the stone, I mean, the bricks and grind it, they use it for road repairs and all this other stuff. So what I'm trying to say here is, I, me personally, I like to see us go out to bid so we know what we're dealing with. I don't know if it's $500,000 or $5 million. I mean, we need a starting point to know, and this will make your information even more valuable because we'll have something to compare to.
Yeah. No, I agree. I think we should do all this at the same time. As Kyle said, it's very valid. We should just do it in tandem, just go all work in different directions.
I don't guarantee anything on full.
No, but more importantly, I think at least we have a consensus that we should start moving on this thing. Looks like we're all pretty much on the same page, I think. We need to at least start moving on this. When we took down the old mansion, asbestos, and what they did from an engineering perspective, they flooded it with water. They had to pump the water out and take the water with the asbestos, so there'd be no dust in the air, so on and so on. It is a different deal, and I'm not sure this RFP, I think the first step would be is for our engineer to see that Quest report. I don't think he's had benefit of that, because it might determine how we deal with this issue. You know? So anyway, for whatever that's worth, but it may be a little more complex than we think.
With them looking at it, followed with everything else that they've been doing, kind of tied together, would that be an additional cost?
Oh, I would ask them to do it for nothing.
Okay. That price works for the village board.
It works for them too.
Yes.
I'm not shy.
Good. Dennis has been very gracious, the town board, and also the village board as well, that he has not charged us for the development of the RFP. If you have that cloud, Mr. Supervisor, that's fine. I mean, I don't know.
I'm a good thinker, I don't know.
No, that's, that's great. I think that's a reasonable approach.
Maybe.
But I agree, I think that's the way to go. You have to assess the asbestos situation to see whether it's force account work or even with the person that's going to come and bid on these types of things. So, are we saying that we, I should get a copy of that report out to Dennis and get an evaluation on what he's thinking about that? Because all of the data is there, it's just not what the price is to remove the asbestos that's in the building. Another thing, going back to what Lou was saying before, that was in the memorandum from Sean, is the salvage value of things in the building, such as the steel that's in the building, the brick, as we mentioned before, the oak doors, the hinges on the doors, those are all things that potentially have value, and a vendor would come in there, as Sean told me, and let's say it was $100,000. If he felt he could get $20,000 worth of value out of it, then he would bid the price based on that, which would be $80,000. So that's just another piece of information for us to consider.
Well, do we want to, what's to go back to the bidding process itself, it's probably $600 for each side, each board? If our engineer says, "Yeah, that should, I can work around the removal of the asbestos in a certain way, we can incorporate it in the RFP, we'll identify the cost with that," do you all want to move on it for $600?
Yeah, speaking only for myself, you know, I think $600, you know, obviously, everyone's hurting financially right now, but I think getting clarification on what this cost would be is essential. I mean, you know, it's a huge liability for both municipalities, and it gets worse by the day. I mean, I think, Ed, I think we had some kids over there a few weeks ago that the police had to respond to. Not necessarily inside, but just around it at night, and that's enough to keep me up at night.
Oh, yeah.
So I would be in favor of moving forward with, you know, the RFP at $600 per municipality.
How about the town board?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay. No greater. All right, well, let's do this then.
Four years ago.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion then that we proceed on with the RFP after our engineer has seen the asbestos report from Quest to incorporate, modify the RFP as any way he needs to, with the understanding it's going to be about $600 for the town board to proceed on with it. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say one word. By us voting, I just want the public to know that this is not saying we're going to knock the building down. We're just saying we're going to gather more information so we can make wiser decisions going forward based on what it might cost and so forth. All right, that's what I want to get there.
Good.
Maybe before, before your board votes, and I'm going to ask for one of my board members to set first and second resolution, do we want to see joint records, any comments specifically regarding to the buildings, since some of the joint recommissioners are here tonight?
Sure. Yeah.
Yes.
I know we want to knock it down, place it very right.
Well, two things. You're going to, you're going to, I get a whole idea, and I, and I, there's a big issue.
Yes, hold on. So those aren't records.
Yeah, this is how we record it in the minutes.
He knows, he's been here.
Kevin Aldis, Kevin.
You're going to, you know, the asbestos is the issue, you're right, you got to identify it, the one report tells you where, Doug, as we've talked in the stairwells and all this, then the 2005 report just tells you what type, but doesn't identify quantity or.
Right.
So that's going to be an issue. I would, I feel that the asbestos first does change what you can do, and it goes to what Phil's saying. To implode this building and leave, fill the hole with the debris from the building is a lot cheaper than destroying, ripping the building down, as my wife was talking to me, of the cartage, getting the stuff out of there, including that hole up, is probably where more money's at.
Right.
So I, I approve where you're going, this is a great idea, you know, get the money, the $1,200, let's move forward. Lou, you're right, let's get a price. You know, that was always the thing. We're always talking, it could be, get their numbers, get three guys in here, let them look at it, you'll be surprised, I think, at the cost of doing it in two different ways. Okay? One should be just to implode it and leave it, and the other is carton, get rid of the carton.
Right. Good. All right. Any other comments from the public? All right, so on the town board, I'd like to call a motion, please. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Can I have someone make a motion for the village board?
I'm willing.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll proceed on with that one. Now, this last item is, discuss the current utilization of Solishon property versus the Nothing we need to move on right now, but I think that we've heard from a lot of different people in the community saying, "Well, you know, I don't see anybody out there, high cost of maintenance and this and that, and do we need a Central Park in town and village or Goshen? And/or do we need to do something else?" And I'm not saying sell it or anything, but I'm just saying, I go back to 2006 when we had a couple of hours, and I said, "Hey, guys, let's just brainstorm with what we could do with that property." Not that we'll ever talk to anybody about it or whatever. And I remember Susan Maisel, who was the, she was the charge of joint rec at the time. Okay? Susan Maisel, for the most part, built the Santa Monica Pier, between the state, the county, and the city of Santa Monica. And she was talking to me one time about extracting value from the asset, and things that she did out there, she'd like put in a skating rink, I don't know if it was an ice skating or roller rink. She got a refurbished antique carousel, and they had some other things, things that attracted people to come to the Santa Monica Pier. I've never seen it, but people who've been out, they said this was a real viable enterprise. Now, I don't know if there's anything like that we can do in the community of Goshen or not to bring people to this area, but something to think about, and I'm just putting it out here tonight because, again, someone was saying, "Well, every time the dog urinates out there, it's $8,220." You know what I mean? Where you see three dogs walking around the. Where you see three dogs walking around the place, and you don't see many other people. And yet, we, each one of us, we put seventy thousand dollars in the recreation each year where we have the town, and another seventy thousand from the village. I mean, it's for all parks, but it's, uh, with money getting tighter and tighter and tighter, maybe there needs to be some thinking about if we, you know, whether we have any interest in doing this kind of thing or not. So I'll leave that at the table for whatever it's worth.
I have a couple of, um, I would call them suggestions, I think it's more basically facts for everybody. I think they, they know these facts, but just to lay them on the table. One of the negatives of the parcel is the fact that the library property extends all the way from two oh seven all the way into the center area there. I think it kind of takes in maybe twenty-five percent of the circular area, you know, describing it back there. That's a, a negative for me. I mean, actually, to tell you the truth, I thought, you know, that the library property went in, but I didn't think it went in that deep.
Probably even far short.
That's a, that's a piece of information for everybody to, to consider. And, um, I don't know, I mean, I've heard all sorts of different types of things, and the latest I heard was we were talking about this afternoon, Doug, that the libraries getting to the point where they are paying off their note, and then they want to potentially sell it.
Well, they're thinking.
Yeah, and, and maybe they're potentially thinking a building's looking there too. So, I don't know, but that's a piece of information.
Well, that's, that's hearsay, and I heard that was talked to some, but that's not the, Jerry, don't put that in the paper, the hickory red's selling. It's hearsay.
I got it written down already.
Well, now, just to make sure you spell George's name correctly.
Yeah, I, I just talked. I think the major point I was trying to make is just the fact that, uh, if you were going to use it for whatever use you're going to use, if the library owns twenty-five percent of that circular area, it's a potential problem. Um, we now have the bathrooms, which is great. Um, and, uh, I think another addition to it, which wouldn't be cost prohibitive, I don't think, placing it in a particular area, would be a pavilion of some type. Um, then, what that would allow us to do then is to rent that facility for all sorts of different types of things. So that's one other idea I have. And then, in the, I think maybe Kevin wants to speak to this issue more than, more than myself, but I'll throw it out, and then maybe Kevin, you could follow up if you'd like after everyone goes here. The fields, in the back right-hand part of that particular area, there's great talk on the JRC board that, not tomorrow, but not next week, but that the potential for fields in the back right area is there to enhance the amount of soccer fields and baseball fields, whatever types of fields that we have in the back area there. So that's my three cents.
Well, you see how the thinking's going. I mean, you know, if we could dedicate some time to this at some point in time, we could do it with our individual boards or do it together, and then compare how we want to do it. But if there's any interest in this, I think it's something probably long-term strategic planning we ought to do, involve joint rec and everybody else that would like to do this way.
If I could just put in my two cents, I think, I don't know that, how many people remember this at this point, but I'm one of three people who voted to put eighty-eight condominiums in December of two thousand and two, put eighty-eight condominium units on that property in the term for which the builder was going to put roof on that Solusian building and tear down the mansion. That ship has kind of sailed, but my opinion about this hasn't changed. You know, that was fourteen acres out of fifty-six, maybe, or whatever it is. I personally don't feel that we can have fifty-six acres of land sitting there, not generating any income, or having any kind of revenue at all coming from it. I don't think that there's going to be a plan at this point to put condominium units on it, or whether it's an ice skating rink, or somebody puts a restaurant on the property somewhere, or some other use that some have will help us to defray the cost of this, because I just don't feel that we can afford to, to, to tear the building down, put all the expense that goes in there without some, some form of money coming back the other way.
Yeah, one of the things that I remember vaguely from, again, back to two thousand and six, when we first discussed this, again, for about an hour in this room right here, someone said, well, what about putting the Culinary Institute of America, have a campus there, or, you know, or how about a, a program from Marist College, you know, a campus where our children can go and access without traveling and all the, so there were some other thoughts to run the table, and I'm not saying any of these were viable or any, but it is something I think that would maybe stimulate, you know, if you really think about it, all of us are smarter than any one of us, and somebody can build off somebody else's idea, and maybe, and maybe the way we're going is just the way we want to go. But it is a very expensive piece of terrain, it's very strategic to the, to the village, it's a wonderful piece of property, and whatever we do, we need to do it well, whatever it is, for whatever it's worth.
I think that also, another way to look at it is, not looking at it as one uniform piece of property either, because the piece of property has various areas that could be used differently. I mean, you know, I, I think that certainly there's a need for, for sports fields in our community. I mean, Craigville Park just gets beat up, or Vans Park now, it gets beat up and beat up and beat up, and, you know, the amount of children participating continues to grow, and you have lacrosse growing and football growing. So I think that needs to be part of the discussion. But that being said, there's a lot of property there that is not ideal for fields, that could be better utilized. I mean, you know, you have that old front area in front of the two buildings that really can't really see that being utilized for sports games. Um, I think the only purpose it really serves now is aesthetically, it's, it's very appealing when you're driving past two oh seven, it makes it look great, but that's a large piece of property out of prime area. And I'm not saying developing it's the way to go, but, but I think that, you know, what's good for the front of the park might not be good for the back of the park, and so on and so forth like that.
Good. And I think the other thing, we certainly need to tie in with the library, I mean, the person I talked to, who talked about that they were paying off the, the note on that property, and would they ever build a library there or not, he wasn't quite sure. But let's, let's say they decide to sell it, and, or work with the town and the village on this property, it brings another dimension of how we could utilize it. But anyway, I think that, again, maybe as we go forward in the, maybe our next meeting or meeting after that, we sit down and talk about this and flesh it out, and see what we come up with. And, go ahead. No, I'm finished.
I had a lot of ideas years ago, but right now, based on the fact that we're going out for an RFP, I think we need to know what we're going to do there, because then you know exactly how much property you're working with. So I think we need to know what's going to happen with that building, so you know the, the amount of property, and then you can actually start to visualize how you're going to put this together, because that, there's a lot of property there with the parking lot and so forth. If it comes down, utilization becomes completely different. You've got back for fields, front for whatever you want to do. So I think that, that's a key, uh, piece to find out, a key piece of the puzzle, and then we can move forward. Because we still have that list inside of all the things that we thought of, not saying that we're going to do something different, but without knowing what's going to happen with the building, if we're going to put it down, not put it down, if somebody wants to do something with it, it's hard to say what we're going to do with the property. I know we need more fields, but we could address that in the back, but to know how we're going to lay it out is hard to do before we know what's going to happen. That's what I feel.
Okay. Any other comments?
Maybe, again, do we want to see joint recs, if they have any thoughts on this?
Would you all be willing to participate in all of this and going forward? Right? If you'd like.
Okay, my first question? Well, thank you. Just to, um, to bring up something that's been addressed over here tonight, when Solusian property was purchased by both the municipalities, was to create a park, a different type of park, in which all members of the community could participate in. And the original thoughts were, for the front part, that would be a, a walking area for our seniors or whatever, and a quiet area for sitting and reading and all those wonderful things. And then, we had this Solusian building, which we've all hesitated on doing something with, and as it deteriorates. But we also had plans in the back to do something in regard to, developing a little bit further in regard to our sporting needs for our community organized leagues. As everyone is aware, we just started putting in some funding to start rehabilitating Craigville Park. It's a tremendous use park, but it's the only park in which our, our sporting leagues can actually participate in and do most of their functions. Currently, our football leagues have no place where to do anything. All lacrosse leagues are severely handicapped and restricted. Um, one of the only viable options we actually have currently right now for developing the fields, organized leagues to utilize, whether it be intramurals or in-house leagues or traveling leagues right now, other than Craigville, was to, to start looking to develop the raw land in the back of the Solusian Park. Now, you've spent the last hour over here discussing the RFP in regard to what we're doing in regard to the building. We're talking an economic cost of updating that for a twelve hundred dollar normal field of all. You know, I, I may be speaking for myself, or I may be speaking for the remaining part of the board. I think you should probably also consider, maybe really need to, as, as Lou was saying, get a full plan, in effect, for Solusian, to use that as a park for what it was originally purchased for. I know both boards are under tremendous economic strain, but I also indicate, I think if we go to the community, if we go to the parents of these children that are going out to Craigville, it is so overly utilized, we need now to take the opportunity for what we have in our park system and start working on it. We have the opportunity to develop that to a normal park, so that we can alternate between that and Craigville Park. Erie Street needs serious money. It has a serious drainage issue that's connected to our, our county government side. We can't count, count on the, on the county to solve their problem, but in the meantime, because they, they can't solve their problem, we're suffering over at Erie Street Park. You know, it's going to be very difficult for either board to put money to that, for joint rec to put money to that. But we sit here now, and we have an opportunity to literally start putting consideration for real. If that was my recommendation, I'd ask, you know, uh, our, our town supervisor, go out there and put a second RFP in. Let's get a formal proposal in regard to Solusian Park, to develop it as a full-time park for our sports leagues in the back, the area where the Solusian building is, as Kevin indicated, if we have the opportunity to implode that, make a nice wonderful park in the lot between the, the front side and the back side. Everyone wins. We need to literally help our families at this point right now. These, these children, our children, our future children, need to have the opportunity to, to go forward in a safe environment. We're putting a lot of money out, out in Craigville, and it's just a, a drop in the bucket in order to make it safe. The issues that are out there in regard to the, the draining issues, or in regard to the conditions of the field themselves, that's also a risk. We need to start developing, and it's going to be very tough, but you know something? I'd be willing to put it out there as a bond issue, put it out to, to, to our voters, to our residents, to our community members, decide what you want. I think you'd be pleasantly surprised at the answer that you'll get back on.
You know, we had a strategic plan, this is back in two thousand and four when I was in joint recreation, I had the job that George had, and we used the town planner, and they worked with the school system, determined how many children were going to come through the system, how many fields we would need, this, that, and it was pretty well laid out. Gave a copy of that to the joint rec, also to the planning board, so they could secure lands and so forth and so on. I also do remember when the Solusian property was purchased, part of the discussion at the time, and we had a lot of community involvement, initially, when it was, it was going to be a passive park, and then since that's kind of changed, we're moving toward an active park, which is fine. But these are the, this, your comments are exactly what we need when we sit down and discuss the entire property, the fifty-six acres, of how we want a different use for each park or whatever, to include, I think, also the library, so we can make sure it all fits together, we get the best utilization of that fifty-six acres that we would, but anyway, that's, that's the kind of thing that, uh, I think we need discussion talk. I don't, I mean, so anyway, any other comments from JRC?
I have a quick question.
Yeah?
The, the area that would be ideal in the back for sports, does that include a part that's owned by the library, you know?
No.
Okay. I didn't realize, what I heard before went that far back, I didn't realize that.
I think the preliminary work that was done, um, and, and the, my apologies, I think the preliminary work that was done, still needs now the professional engineers to go in there and identify access, a safe access, whether it's coming out of the two seven or going out onto Craigville Road, or even going back out the back way. But I think we, we're at the opportunity now, where, again, you know, gentlemen, we, we keep coming back to this, and, you know, the members of the joint rec board, as well as yourselves, have been discussing this since the Solusian property was purchased. And other than doing phase one, where the, the pass will put in, the lighting was put in, the finials, it came to hit the issue one, one major here, we really haven't had the opportunity to now go forward. And unfortunately, because we've taken so much time to do that, our other parks have deteriorated just because of excess abuse, and we're missing a terrific opportunity. Because once, if you do decide to go forward and change the parameters, and say whether we want to sell part of it or develop part of it in order to create a, a retail base or a return on taxpayer dollars, that, again, that's part land area that is very difficult to replace in regard to, you know, today's economic times. You know, I understand there are other parcels of land that may come on due to development of other residential areas, but that's may. We currently have this right now on a pocket, essentially located within, within the village. That's something serious that needs to be, to be looked at.
Yeah, to clarify, it's forty-nine point nine acres.
There you go. I knew we had an engineer in this, and you.
Uh-uh. Okay. Getting the building, I mean, small steps is a good way to start this thing. Obviously, from a security standpoint, and if Chief Watts was here, I'm sure he'd be the first one to stand up. We need to do something for the building. JRC spends a lot of money on keeping repairing defenses and, and doing some of these things. You know, you talk about the oak doors and the, and the metal that's in that building, I don't know if there's any metal left in that building, to tell you the truth. I think it already made it to the scrapyard, okay? So, you know, that, they've been in and out of there, and it's not just kids, all right? We're having, we're having professionals, and we can tell by the way they open up the fence and things are done, there's pros going in there, and this man will not building piece by piece for us also. I, I really want to stay in line with, there was a master plan for the park?
Yeah.
That was developed, and we should come back and revise that based on where we're at now, going forward, and maybe allot some money to do that. But I'm still going to stay with where Lou was at, let's get it out on the street, let's see what it is to get it down, get it secured, and move on from there. There's a lot that can be done with that park, it's a beautiful park, and I would hope that the, I would hope that that big hole on the hill, if it ever does come down, the library steps up and says, hey, this would be the place. We got the, you know, in the front of that park would still be the passive end of the park, because that's the library on the hill. Down below, we could have our, our bandstand and that kind of thing for some cultural events, even in the back of the park, we go into the sports, uh, uh, venue. But right now, from my standpoint, I have a security issue out there, and I need to get it taken care of, and I think the first step is, let's see what it's going to be to go it down.
Well, we've agreed to do that, so I think that's where we're at tonight. Okay, unless there's, oh, Pete, you had a question?
I just had a question with joint rec. So, going back to the thing, now, just so I get an idea, how many acres is Craigville? Roughly?
I think that's the fifty-six.
Uh, you know, Ken, how big do you think Craigville is?
Not fifty-six.
Fifty-six.
Yeah, that's the fifty-six acres.
It's not a long time ago, Ken.
Because I'm just trying to visualize in my mind, like, based on how that's laid out, and what could be laid out there. Now, you made a mention of the park out there being overloaded, which I've observed it myself, I mean, it is, it's packed in there all the time. So that, there's, there's no denying that, or no, no doubting that. So what would it take, how many more additional fields do you need? Or would you ideologically like to have, like soccer, football, lacrosse, whatever fields, how many would you need?
Let's, let's start, let me, I go, answer that question going down a different road. Would Ken, Dubal, and company, I think, fill, a lot of people involved? When Ken, New Ball, and company, and so, a lot of people involved with Myron Yubaski, and they created that park, there was 190 to 200 kids working the program. When I first came on the Joint Rec Board 15 years ago, there was 300 kids in that program. Okay? Whether it's soccer, whatever, your choice. Today, we're sitting at 1,000. We have 1,000 children coming out of the Goshen School System that are looking for.
Four of mine participated. You know, I mean, I've been there.
Yeah. So to answer your question, sure, we could develop, we have no place for football, as he said. So we really need, when I came before the board, and the Village Board, and the TAB Board, I said, we need at least one area for football that's going to be, you know, a good 500 feet, about 300 foot area, you know, 15,000 square foot level playing field. That would get one sport going. There's a lot to be done.
And Pete, just follow on the Craigville. We're putting the drainage in there now. One of the main issues at Craigville is the parking of the cars, the parents' cars. And as everyone is here, you know, who has children that have participated, a lot of times the service roads are used as the parking lots. And one of the things we've done in the last several years, put trees out there along those service roads to try to deter the parents from parking. But the problem is, we still have too many people, parents, that are coming and going during league time, that it creates such a hazardous coming through that. So if we even develop something at Craigville, I have to say, parking would probably be one of the priority things, to make it more advantageous, so more parents to park in a parking lot area instead of parking in the service roads that are so close to our soccer fields. You know, anyone goes out there, you know, our fields, those roads are probably 10, 12 feet off the line, with no guardrails, no, you know, flower pots to block, and everyone texting mom or dad there or whatever, that, you know, we're scared. And that's a huge, huge issue that we need to address also. So developing the safe playing areas is what really needs to be the key. And I think, again, if you put it towards the parents, put it towards the voters, left them aside. But in order to do that, we need to come up with a solid plan with the building coming down, or the building being re, whatever it is, but in order to go forward and develop. I think we're getting to the point, no one, no one here wants to make a tough financial decision, but I think you need to give it to our community residents to make a decision for us. What do you want?
I think that the financial decision, the state of New York has really asked us to be in within the 2% property, or the tax levy, and
Does that also include the bonds also?
You've got to pay the bond back.
Right. On the budgetary line, is that a bond?
It includes, yeah. And it includes water and sewer, it includes everything. So it's a big deal. And the fact is, that a lot of our employees now are having 0% increases, et cetera. Money is extremely tight. And I'm going to just give you an example, mortgage tax. Mortgage tax for the town four years ago, I think it was around $700,000. This year, we put in the budget 250. And the latest looking at it, will be closer to 200 than we will be the 250. So it's down one half a million dollars in one year. And when we look at the number of employees that we have, and what we do, Mr. Broderick Knoll today said, gee Doug, I'm 50 catch basins behind. See, we're in competition, one group from another to another. And so, good planning is extremely important, so we monitor and maintain our plans as per the law. And this thing is done in action for the next five years, this 2% tax cap. So it's four more years after the one we have currently. But anyway, good discussion. I think what we're saying tonight is, let's take the building, check it out, see what's going to cost to come down, we'll go from there. We've got it on here, talking about Solisian property, long-term plan. I think I've heard here tonight that people, we want to proceed on with this, and will certainly involve everybody. And we'll go from there. Okay? So thank you for the input, folks. Now, Kyle, you want to proceed on with Village Business Group?
Yeah, we just have to do two resolutions. I just want to make just a brief comment. I just wanted to, on behalf of the Village Board, thank the supervisor, the town worker hosting us here tonight at the meeting. I would suggest that maybe we do not decide the date tonight, but maybe make an effort to meet before the end of the fall, instead of, you know, letting another year and a half lapse, you know, do it biannually or, you know, triannually, you know, just to keep the conversation going. Especially if we put the RFP out in the next few weeks, or even a month from now, we should have some definitive answers, you know, before, you know, fall time. Ed Char, who was named one of Orange County's Rising Stars on the record today, and that's a nice thing. So Pete, I just have two quick resolutions. I mean, if you guys want to take a break, I don't want to
Don't, why don't you sit here?
Okay.
Sure.
I just want to add one thing. If we could meet once a quarter, it would be great. That would be a suggestion on my part, at least once a quarter. And if we don't have anything on the agenda, just cancel the meeting. That's just my idea.
Could I just bring one more thing?
Sure. I just wanted to say that, and going back to what they were saying about, you know, putting to the voters. See, I feel that we should look, get together a plan as to what to do in the park to include the demolition, and, you know, one-shot deal. You knock the building down, and you start building ball fields, and you start putting it all together, all in one shot. That's just, I'm just throwing that out there for discussion. That's just my feeling. And if we go to the voters, because I think there's ways, if I'm not, I might be wrong, but there's ways, you can generate something that goes to people's bill, if the voters agree upon it, then, you know, it's an extra $20 a year, that's a separate, like your library tax, or similar to the fire department tax, or whatever, your separate taxing things that could fund that whole thing to, a project to do it. And because just doing one little piece of this, and one little piece of that, and then redoing that, I mean, it'll be 50 years before somebody has any utilization to that park, and it's there. So that's just my two cents.
All right. I just have two quick things for the Village Board. We, because we're not meeting after this. We got the bids in for our Green Street Drainage Project that we got the grant from for the county. I'm just going to read the resolution briefly. Whereas the Village of Ocean has received eight bid proposals for Brumman Place, South Church Street, and Park Place Drainage Improvement Project. Whereas the lowest bid, the amount of $212,625.04 was received from Tam Enterprises. Whereas Tam Enterprises is the lowest responsible bidder for the Drainage Improvement Project, having submitted all the required documentation and bidding certification to consider their bid, the amount of $212,652.04, complete. Whereas Lecontelli Serving and Engineering PC has determined through reference checks that the contractors are equipped and the performance records are satisfactory for the completion of this type of project. Therefore, it is hereby resolved that Brumman Place, South Church Street, Park Place, Drainage Improvement Project be awarded Tam Enterprise. Can I have motion on this?
So moved.
In a second?
Back to you.
Any questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And this is the last thing briefly, a letter from the Goshen Fire District. Dear Mayor Roddy, we have awarded bids for the renovation of the Menacing Fire Station and anticipate starting construction sometime in the near future. To promote continued cooperation between the Village and the Fire District, we are requesting a waiver and the building permit fees for this project. Thank you for your consideration. I'll be hearing from you. Alfred Terry, Chairman of Work Commissioners. My thought on this was, you know, the Fire District, all taxpayers, a lot of them are in the Village of Ocean, I don't see it being necessary to charge them, because it's taken a lot of one pocket into the other. So I'd be in favor of waiving these fees.
So moved.
Back to you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much, Supervisor and Town Board.
Is there anything that you want to speak to as far as this letter that you passed off to us? No, that, just, I brought that in case where the conversation went. That was put together by Dave Donovan when Mayor Weinberger, it was his administration, just asking what would need to be done to move forward with some kind of plan of the park that wasn't in the specific guidelines that were in place when the park was built. Yeah. It wasn't, the conversation didn't really go in that direction tonight, but that way everyone has that letter for their records. Thank you.
Good. Sure. All right. Thank you. Great. Thank you.
I've only gotten a fourth of a guess, Mike. I've got the same trip. Be well. My favorite millionaire. Hey, get in line, pal, get in line. Big ribbing on that. Hey Pete, your little parking, you need some more of that scratch off stuff.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I've got a big one, I've got all research access. Okay. All right. Yeah. Okay. All right. Yeah. 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 Okay. All right. Yeah. 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 Phil, I've got a question for you, because you're the last person to ask everybody up. If you'd like to see about this. So since this is the only copy, I'm Yeah. Go ahead. I wasn't I don't think you're going to I don't know. I don't know. I'm not going to Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. 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 Okay, let's go ahead and get started if we can, please, and Okay. We don't like chanting on one side, chanting on the other side. We're going to talk to daddy, he can do what he wants to, I guess. Okay, the I gave spray, but I got to talk to him.
The first item, the first two items we have been for general discussion. Just as information for the board, a water containment alert was issued effective July 17th, 2012, for Hamilton Park, Arcadia Hills, Stonehead, Scotchtown Water District. The water can no longer be used for outside purposes. And it was put in the paper.
Oh, was it?
Yeah, it was in the paper, yeah. Yeah. The, this is just for the, now, since then, since the 17th, we've had two or three rains, and we'll see what it looks like. But what happened was, one of the pumps in Arcadia Hills cavitated, or it pump water, it's pumping air, so we, so it was appropriate, we did this just for precautions. The next thing for the board, the budget officers requested departmental input for their 2013 financial budget. Response is due Monday, August 13th. Please work with your respective departments to ensure you have input into the numbers. We're told by the New York State contact that the medical insurance and pension cost rate increases will be available from Albany by mid-August. Last year, they were wrong, really wrong, and we didn't know until a week before what they were going to be. And then the other thing is that we've got to deal with the insurance company on Wardman's Comp. We always sit down with Comp Alliance and beat out our rates, and so that'll probably take place, could be as late as September. But George and I and Phil and others will work on that one. Okay, but so make sure that, we want the initial return, so we can get started on this on the 13th of August. Is there anything else anybody would like to discuss for the other meeting?
I just want to jump in on that one, because I just, I was telling Doug last week, the federal government just released a report that said the average medical insurance nationwide is going up 15%. That's nationwide, so, you can imagine what it's going to be in tri-state area. It's going to be phenomenal.
This was in my box today, and I guess it's on the, let's give it to Town Hall, about Wednesday, August 1st, 6 to 8 p.m. at the Bosse's, 53 Gibson Road, the Route 17 corridor study, Public Workshop Number One, is going to take place to take input on the corridor vision statement, contribute thoughts on the corridor needs, learn about existing and forecasted traffic conditions, and provide feedback on transportation concepts. So anybody who wants to attend, it seems like it's going to be interesting.
We'll be putting that at our course bulletin board. That's something you might want to, Jerry, talk about in the paper.
I didn't understand what you said.
Well, the state of New York, the state of New York is the Route 17, they're going to be upgrading it, and they want public input into what they're going to be doing for the upgrading. And they're going to have the first meeting at Bosse's. Tell them about the state of New York DOT.
I'll look at it.
Okay, very good. Anything for the, okay, would someone like to make a motion? We adjourn the meeting then and go to executive session with the intent not to return, to talk about the PD chief's status update, door control officer's status update, and the third one, you can scratch, because Matt's not here, and the tax beneficiary's status update.
So moved. Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Folks, thank you very much for coming.
Yeah.
Can I just, now that you're in turn, make the
Don't give him too much time.
I know, you have to get home and have some.